Which will be fun.
Yeah, always that reduced.
Who's Jody?
Reduced numbers of people.
It already sold close to 200 tickets, so we're doing. I believe what we're going to do is do two shows for two nights in a row at 45 people each show.
That's great.
Yeah, so that'll be our trial for something big like that.
Hi, guys.
Jenna.
Hi Jenna.
Sorry about that little snafu. I think Bob was having a little bit of a hard time getting in also. It let me dial in from the link like just with my phone, not with the Zoom platforms. Which is what I'm on right now. Which is fine, as long as you can hear me.
Can you hear?
And I can hear you. And I can hear you. So that's, I think that's what we're aiming for.
Oh, there's Bob. And there's Taylor. Janice and Jeremy don't want to be seen by us. Bob, you're on twice, it looks like.
Well, I have two votes.
It's like a weighted vote.
I only see me once, thank God.
We're live, too.
Oh, good. We're waiting for anybody. Janice, I guess we're all on.
All on.
All on, all active?
Why can't?
What?
Are we?
You should be on YouTube, yeah.
There you go. Taylor, once again, is in a different location.
Same location, different angle tonight.
Oh, okay.
All right, let's get going.
There's a window, so.
All right, we're all on, and we're on the cable and YouTube, it sounds like, so let's get started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting from May 5th, 2020. We'll go right into our established agenda. And the first item is a public input on non-agenda items. I believe we have one letter. Janice, is that correct?
Yeah, that's the only one I got, so Peter, yeah.
Okay, I can read that to the record if you want me to do that.
He wanted you to.
Yeah, sure, no problem. It's from Peter Lindquist on Chester Street in Camden to the Camden Select Board dated 5/5/2020 to be read in public at open, public comment section of the public meeting format. Three points I believe important to bring to your attention as well as the general public. One, the Satellite Club of the West Bay Rotary will be picking up litter along streets and byways, not as a large group, but individuals taking care of streets close to where they live. Thanks to Allison McCullar and the Earth Day Zoom meeting for getting our club involved. Item two, at the Select Board Meeting of 3/24/2020, Taylor Benzie presented interviews from users and owners in Lake McGuntogook watershed area. The vote taken at that meeting to address concerns did not go far enough due to the fact that the town of Lincolnville was not part of the solution. I've spoken with Dale Darty, and I would like to volunteer working with him in the Camden Select Board to make that happen. Item three, please explain the zoning ordinance amendment that will be appearing on the July ballot. How does this proposed change in the ordinance benefit the town of Camden? The comprehensive plan that this body voted on clearly states that the affordable worker housing is a goal for the town. Your amendment requires a six-month minimum stay to use an accessory apartment. It does not help temporary students, professional parenthetical, part-time parenthetical maritime workers or Camden residents trying to earn income from an apartment they own. Please answer this question this evening for the record. Any comments, Audra, Jeremy, to that, to those items, or Taylor?
Yeah, sure, I guess I can address number two. I'm not quite sure I follow, since we did talk about Lincolnville at the last meeting. But I'll just give an update for everybody. To recap, in case it wasn't clear. So Paul Leaper, who was the chair of the Working Group for the Inland Mauring Committee, working group, has been in touch with David Kenny, who's the town manager or the administrator in Lincolnville. They had a similar group charged with the same task of looking at morgues in Lincolnville. They forwarded their the direction that they would like to go forward with, sent to their attorneys, and they're waiting to hear back. Similarly, similarly to what we did from Bill Kelly. Long story short, they're being kept up to date on what we're doing and vice versa. But I think the important thing that we pointed out, that Paul pointed out in the last meeting, was that Lincolnville has very little public waterfrontage on their side of the lake for non-shorefront owner morgues, as opposed to specifically in Beres Cove, and that was the crux of the issue.
Thank you, Bill. I was going to point out, too, that according to our, sometimes our records, I don't recall any vote that was taken in the last meeting.
No, that was inaccurate as well.
All right. Any response on the zoning ordinance questions, Jeremy, Audra?
I would say to recap with that one, the everybody agrees that housing affordability is a goal. It is not a goal that can be achieved just with one ordinance. It's going to take a number of different approaches in regards to amendments to our current zoning ordinance. You know, working on housing trusts. There's a number of different steps that are going to need to be taken to address the supply and demand side of housing affordability. This was you know, one step that the board felt was low-hanging fruit. And, you know, it is providing the opportunity in the RU1, RU2, and CR zones for accessory apartments or accessory dwellings, sorry. It never existed before. So I think anytime that we can do something that is going to increase the ability to build more dwelling units, it's working towards the affordability issue. I would say that a lot of these questions were answered or discussed in public hearings and workshops of the planning board. So I would encourage anybody who has any confusion about this issue to watch the planning board hearing on February 20th and the select board hearing on March 24th. And also, there's been a number of workshops where this particular ordinance amendment was discussed.
Thank you. Mark is in it first.
I can address some of that. To refresh people's minds on what this is, this was not a long-term building out housing. This was a particular situation dealing with accessory apartments. And what happened was people would come to us saying that the rule used to be that somebody who had a house and had an accessory apartment, and there's a special definition about that. They had to stay in the main house in order to rent out the accessory apartment. And we had some senior members of the community that came to us and said, "We don't need the large house anymore." So what we'd like to do is move into the accessory apartment because the kids are gone. And then we could rent out the full house. And so that was the genesis of why this was started. And the reason the six-month rule is there is because there are plenty of places you can get short-term short-term residences here, but very few where you can get long-term. So this was a short, this was a quick way to make sure that we had places where long-term rentals could occur, which we need more than anything in the town. And it was just one particular thing dealing with accessory apartments. Like Audra said, not dealing with the whole town and the whole housing issues and trying to produce more housing for people. It was a specific answer to a specific problem.
Thank you. Allison, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think Mark summed it up pretty well. The point of it was specifically to not increase the availability of vacation rentals and very short-term situations. But to try, so I mean, we actively, it wasn't just an oversight, it was an active intentional crafting of language so as to open up an opportunity for people to make more year-round and long-term housing available, but to not just flood the market with additional vacation rentals, which is what oftentimes happens in places where this type of thing is put in, that, okay, you can just let everybody build a bunch more housing, and then you just get a bunch more vacation rentals and people that want to invest in that.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you very much. And with that, I don't, I believe that was the only, correct me if I'm wrong, Janice or Audra, the only public comment we had submitted. And thank you, Peter, for submitting that. We'll move on to the item two, which is Select Board Reports. Allison, would you like to start?
Sure. Some good news on the recycling front. We're making a little bit of progress. It's not quite what I hoped for, but I'm usually on the extreme end of that kind of thing anyway. So the 20th is going to be the beginning of limited a limited increase in the number of materials that are accepted there, but it's going to be a phased approach. Wednesdays and Thursdays, which are generally lower traffic days for for the transfer station, is when you can bring a few additional items. Newsprint, number-two plastic, the natural milk jugs, as well as like the colored number-two, which is usually like laundry detergent bottles and that kind of thing. We're still holding off on any number-one or three-through-seven plastic, so that needs to be kept at home or disposed of in yellow bags. Tin cans are going to be back online for just Wednesdays and Thursdays. Tin cans.
Or paper.
No mixed paper for now. It's just going to be newsprint and magazines. So that normal newspapers and magazines bin. So the idea here is to give a little bit more room for people that are coming through. They are also going to limit the number of people that can be in that recycling area at any given time. I think the number that's been put out there for now is five. So that will keep employees there from getting too overwhelmed with, you know, lots of people who are confused and asking questions. It's going to be really important that you just stick to the Wednesdays and Thursdays for those additional items. Otherwise, if you come, if you show up with all of your, you know, newspapers on a Tuesday, they're going to turn people away. For now, hopefully that can increase pretty soon. But scrap metal and corrugated cardboard are still going to be every day that the transfer station is open. We haven't gotten a start date again yet for Scrap Dog's composting. So, you know, we'll be following that carefully, but that's going to be a big, we want it to be successful, hopefully, and then as long as it's successful and not overwhelming, then they'll be able to increase it. So no glass, no returnables. Returnables for anybody that's interested. I took mine to the Simonton Corner Community Hall, which is, if everybody knows where Simonton Corner is, there's like a a community hall building there, and you can, it's a nonprofit organization, and they they do what the Lions Club would do, what they normally do with with them at the transfer station. So in case anybody is desperate to get rid of those, like I was. And, yeah, that's it for there. I also had a good meeting with Bruce Libby, who was our sexton at the Mountain View Cemetery. And that was really informative to walk around with him and see some of the issues as a sexton sees them, or as somebody who's been more intimately involved for a very long time there. And so he pointed out all of the, you know, not just the stones, which is what kind of jumps out at everybody. But the grubs that are, this was interesting to me, and it wasn't something I expected. The issue of the grubs digging down into the grass there, it's really it's gotten it, so there's almost no grass in many places. And it's not just, this is normally the kind of thing I would roll my eyes at a little bit, like, oh, who cares? You know, it's just the grass doesn't need to be perfect. But what was obvious is that it's actually causing erosion there, and in some places, because the grass isn't holding all of the soil together anymore, it's eroding and then leading to to stones tipping over and a variety of issues. So what stops them from dealing with that in the past has been the town's no-chemical policy. And so that's something that we might look at in the future with the cemetery committee. But it is going to be an issue at some point, because you get mudslides down that whole cemetery. It's a really huge part of our town. So that was really interesting. The brown-tailed moth is, a lot of those trees are oak trees. And so I've had a number of people come to me. Some of them are very concerned that we might hastily take down the oak trees, or that more of these beautiful trees aren't being planted. They're really some of the oldest and most beautiful trees in town. Then there are other people who are very concerned because they're, you know, they have lung conditions, and they're trying to go and visit their loved ones' grave and dealing with not only the concern that the tree is going to, limbs are going to fall and damage a stone, but then also the very real impact of the brown-tailed moth, especially for some of the people that might be visiting more frequently. So, again, just things to keep in mind. And another interesting thing was this week, which maybe I wasn't going to say, but with more people walking around now and trapped at home and looking for places to walk, that's caused at least one interesting revelation about public access or town right-of-ways that every so often private property owners, if they're not really followed carefully, try knowingly or unknowingly to block public right-of-ways. Because it's always nice, well, I won't speculate as to why they do it, but one of the ones that we've had issues with over the years has been finding ways for people to access Sherman's Cove, which is really this just truly magical place in Camden, and there aren't very many options. There's is it Harbor Road or Marine Ave?
You mean C Street? No, no.
There's one, I think it's Harbor Road, that you can go, you know, you can go down, and there's steps, and you can really, at low tide, you can walk quite a ways and get over to the beachy area. The only other place is Sherman Point Road, which doesn't give a very public access vibe to it when you drive down, but there's this T. And the town does have a right-of-way there, and people can park on the paved part and then be able to walk directly down that road to the beach. But it's been sort of contested over the years. So anyway, that's just something to think about, that we should probably develop a process at some point for kind of keeping track of all of these right-of-ways and making sure that we might maintain or monitor the ones that are especially valuable. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Wilson. Mark?
You're muted.
I wasn't muted, but Audra did it to me.
Yeah, they keep muting me, too.
She's heard me talking now, so I understand why she doesn't.
Sorry, it sounded like someone was doing the dishes in the background. I was trying to get rid of ambient noise.
The Opera House, you know, it may seem like everything is shut down, but not at all. People at Opera House have been working hard. Dave Morrison's been working closely with the state, trying to figure out new rules and new ways to use the Opera House. And he had some good news from the state today. They've okayed a program that he's developed and how to use the building. And, you know, as a lot of people know, as I've talked about, we've had the Blue Cafe up on the third floor, which holds about 40, 50 people, and it's been very successful. So what we're doing basically is moving it to the main floor with 300 seats on the bottom floor. Figured out that we can put 45 people into the bottom floor of the Opera House, space them out safely, and then have acts come in, because we're limited to 50 people, and have some acts come in and perform. We've got, Dave's worked out some special plans. He's got a name for the series. He's got special plans about times and length and a really good plan that I'm sure there'll be, you know, he'll be communicating through the press. But we'll start having some shows of some, hopefully, really talented local main agents, because we can't bring people in from out of state at this point, but we can use local people. So there'll be a way to safely use the Opera House as a music venue and entertainment venue, again, I should, because it won't just be music. And looking very forward to that. They've been working really hard to figure out a really workable plan to keep people entertained and yet keep everybody safe. So watch for news for that. And then I had a request from the Energy Committee, just wondering where we were on some issues. And I know that Audra has some news about streetlights that I thought she could talk about. And I think Bob's got some news about energy situations as well that I think everybody should be aware of. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Mark. Allison, your hand up.
So I'm imagining that maybe I just don't have enough information, but when I hear, like, we figured out a way to be able to have shows at the Opera House, that's a little bit alarming to me, just because we haven't even figured out a way to open up our public bathrooms yet down at the public landing, and I'm not necessarily clamoring for that. But what makes me feel like that, like we could do that? I mean, we don't even have the town office open, or...
He's been working with the state and has got an agreement from the state, and they've worked out rules. And again, I don't want to give the specifics. I'll let Dave break that out when he's ready. But they've worked out ways for cleaning in between shows, limit of 45 people, so you can space it out. He's been working on all those details. So, you know, it's coming. So he's done a really good job of making sure that everything is safe as possible. And yet, you know, provides a small bit of entertainment.
Thanks.
Just since they get settled, I feel like maybe that, before they really start having events, that's something that could be run by, I don't want to say us, but maybe us, because it seems some of it is not just a legal issue, but a of setting an example issue.
I think before you comment about possibilities, maybe it's better to look at the rules and the way they've set it up and the safeties before we cut anymore on it.
I'm just saying, hopefully, we hear more before it actually starts, so that I can have a good way of explaining it to people.
I agree. I'm hearing this is something, it's in process. It hasn't been decided. It has to be all done correctly to all of our points. And we're just going to slowly work on these pieces. We'll get there and figure out how to get it approved, because there is a safety issue involved, a huge one. But I want to get to the rest of the Select Board, too. Taylor?
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay, good. Jenna? Jenna?
Sorry, I think I was muted. I have something that I actually typed up that I'd like to read, that kind of reflects some of the concerns that I've been hearing about different aspects, mostly with relation to COVID. But anyhow, I want to take a few minutes to present some resounding concerns that have been relayed to me directly regarding COVID confusion and community response. I understand that very little has been provided in terms of guidance for municipalities. Concerns have been raised by business owners, trying to be proactive about how to prepare for safely reopening and what the town expects or will assist with. This includes enforcement of social distancing appropriately, questions regarding six-foot markers on their floors and the outdoor sidewalks, and also the reality that many of our storefronts are nary more than 12 or 15 feet wide sans displays. This is something I suggest we think about and work to support our retailers directly with correct and clear information from town staff. Enforcement is another big question that has been brought up a lot. A number of people are seeing things that make them uncomfortable and that directly conflict with their perceptions of the state mandate, and they don't know what to do. We have likely all heard or read the horrific story of a security guard in Michigan who was shot for confronting someone about not wearing a mask. I would like to know definitively how law enforcement should appropriately be involved in some of these scenarios. I've had residents bring some pretty alarming things up to me and confrontational things. That would be a helpful directive to provide to residents who have witnessed egregious situations and are feeling unsafe entering public places. Unsafe because of the behaviors of people not wanting to wear masks and the constitutional rights stuff. Now, secondly, and this is a tough one for me, I want to address concerns that I've received about a letter that was sent to the Mills Administration by the Chamber of Commerce, the Penobscot Regional Chamber of Commerce, asking the Mills Administration to reconsider their thoughtful stepped reopening plan for the state. It has come to my attention that some residents of our local community feel that the chamber did not consider the general safety of the community and its inhabitants outside of the impact on the business community when the letter and recommendations contained therein was sent. These residents, all individuals, not groups, asked me to convey that the letter suggested actions such as shortening the duration of phases, et cetera, that do not represent their interests as residents. I want it to be known that I'm simply conveying concerns that have been shared with me, not taking a position of my own. I fully respect all guidelines issued by the governor and her team with respect to the tremendous loss of economic vibrancy and the fact that we are staring down the barrel of a very frightening lack of tourism this season. Growing up in a small and largely tourist-dependent business, I try to think about this with great consideration for all interests, but public health must come first, in my opinion. I will continue to sing the praises of our local businesses and their awe-inspiring ability to adapt during an unprecedented time. And I encourage all who have the ability to join me in supporting local businesses as best you can and keep your money local whenever possible. Now, I read this just because it's kind of a compilation of things that I've heard, and I don't want to get into a big discussion right now. I'll email this to all of you, and perhaps it can be some things that we consider, perhaps for the next meeting or an interim meeting or workshop. But I did just want to get that on the record.
Thank you, Jenna. Audra, do you want to comment on all this stuff, or you have stuff on your agenda? Do you want to mention this part of their agenda?
Yeah, I think that Jenna raised a lot of great points. Jeremy is going to be meeting with the Camden Area Business Group tomorrow, and they're going to be talking about a lot of the things that Jenna brought up, particularly with retailers and, you know, with the phased opening, what does that mean for them? And, you know, what can the town do to make it, you know, better for them or easier? You know, we want to, I think there's some things that, you know, we can do to get a little bit creative that we haven't really fleshed out yet. But it's worth discussing, and we just really want to convey that we want to work with them to, you know, make it as easy for them and as successful for them as possible, given all the constraints that we have right now. So I think that that's our goal for when we, you know, speak with our local businesses and the you know, the attitude that we're going to convey to them, and we're going to try best we can to, you know, come up with clear guidance, because, I mean, to be quite honest, it's been as frustrating for you know, town staff as it has been for the general public to get, you know, clear and concise guidance on what these guidelines mean. You know, we aren't given any more or better access to people in the state who can answer these questions. So, you know, often we're left in a position where we're finding out information when everybody else is, and we're just doing our best to try and catch up and, you know, provide, you know, as good a guidance as we possibly can.
Thank you, Audra.
Allison?
Is that something with the, like with the Camden Area Business Group, could that be either opened up or replicated so that, I'm assuming it's a Zoom call, that he's not, like, meeting with them in person? We're still...
Correct. It is a Zoom call organized by the cabbage.
So would you consider, or would Audra, or I don't know who I'm supposed to ask, but sometimes it, businesses and individuals that are not part of the, you know, one of these formal groups might get left out a little bit, and I would love to see the town hosting just more general information opportunities, and even if it's not like you, Jeremy, being the expert guru that knows all and every single guideline perfectly and has a plan, just to listen to, you know, what the questions are and have every so often, you know, every Thursday or something, say, hey, this is an open Zoom call. This is, you can share your business concerns, or or is that, or is the Zoom thing with cabbage something that's more of the public can listen in on?
I see where it's coming from. I don't know if they'll be able to listen in. They probably won't be able to tomorrow, but I think it's a good idea. I will say, you know, I have talked to many businesses in town already, and I continue to do so. So I just wanted to get that out there, that it's not like we're not, but I understand your point. Could the town be a little more proactive to seek? Could the town be a little more proactive to seek people's comments or thoughts? Sure, we could do that. You know, I it's unfortunately, like Audra said, these, these, this executive order, it's it's up to interpretation and it's a struggle for us. So as much as I want to provide as many answers as I can, um, I can't give all of the answers. You know, Randy and I were just, I just, before this meeting started, Randy, um, police chief and I were on a call together about a lodging business um, and essential businesses. And it's not easy to explain. It's not easy to understand. And even the governor's office doesn't know what it all means. Um, so we're trying through it.
Jeremy, maybe just bring it up to the to the cabbages, as Allison suggests, what they can plan going forward tomorrow. And maybe maybe this is a way to do it and might as well open up all the, turn over all the stones.
Understood. And that was my, that's kind of where I'm coming from tomorrow and talking with them, you know, if they, if, you know, I spoke with a lodging business today. You know, about some things and, you know, if there's things that the town can do, um, you know, we're not an in owner, we're not restaurateurs, we're not retailers. Um, but if there are things that those businesses are thinking of that, you know, that can help, you know, that we could do potentially to help them diversify their business to 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 do whatever, to help them through this, uh, we're willing and will entertain anything and everything. Because it is such a significant time for everyone.
It's an unfortunate moving target. Um, like.
And I think also it's not just about like expecting you to know everything. I think it can just be helpful to have for people to hear that like this is where you see it as a gray area and this is where it's going to be evolving. And there, there are, there are things that are, you know, set in stone where you would tell a business, no, that's not going to fly. Like there, there are clear things that you know are not okay right now, but then there are the gray areas and
understood.
I don't even know, like, like also like what Jenna said, I have no idea what the Camden Police Department thinks at what point they would approach somebody or take action or I haven't heard anything negative at all about what they've been doing or not doing. Um, so I don't, I'm not saying that anything necessarily needs to change, but um,
Right.
Just hearing the thought process of town staff, I think it's 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 helpful. I know I personally enjoy being able to hear it. And I think giving the public a little bit more of a window into the way we're thinking about things, even if it's not definite on one thing or another is is helpful.
Great. Audra, do you have anything else you wanted to mention? I thought you, on your agenda or not?
I, yes, I have some updates that I'd like to share. So, um, the installation of LED lights will begin around May twenty fifth and it'll take about two weeks. So we're anticipating that probably by June twelfth, it'll be finished. This is great. It's, you know, the culmination of a, you know, a long project and it took, you know, the entire town to, you know, support this all the way through from the conceptual phase to, um, you know, voters voting on the financing for it. So, um, very exciting that it's it's going to be done. And it's one of these things that despite everything else that's going on, we're able to proceed with.
Yeah, you you mean LED streetlights, not just lights?
Yes, LED streetlights.
Just want to make that clear.
Yes. Um, so also the construction of the mechanic street and Washington Street parking lots and all of the sidewalk improvements around the parking lots is going to begin in about two weeks. Uh, the work on the Opera House, so the the repointing as well as the gutter work is going to begin in mid-June. So we're working with the YMCA on trying to figure out what can be done with the summer rec program as well as summer camp programs. This is another thing where we find out, um, you know, in the executive order that's handed down that summer camps can open. But then there's still all these parameters around no more, you know, no gatherings of fifty or more people. And it looks like we won't be able to do busing and there's only going to be sort of small groups. It's going to kind of look more like a daycare than a traditional summer camp. But there's all kinds of things that they weren't clear in the executive order. There's no staff in the governor's office who are answering questions about this. I think the YMCA is working more with the daycare licensing side of the state to try and figure out what the way forward is with this. So more to come on what's going to happen with the summer rec program and the summer camps. Uh, we are also working with the school district to try and find, um, you know, ways that we can help uh, recognize the class of twenty twenty. I just feel, I just feel so bad out of, you know, a lot, you know, there's a lot of groups of people in the community that are sort of missing out on things because of what's going on now. But I just feel, I feel for the, you know, the seniors who have worked so hard for so many years to get to a point where they're, you know, having this real milestone and it's not going to be a traditional graduation for them. So I've said to the superintendent, you know, the town really wants to help to try to make this special for them. So we're going to try to look at some creative ways that, you know, we can work together with the school just district to try and, you know, it's not going to be the same, but make it special in some way for the graduating class this year. And, um, that's all I have.
Just one to what Mark mentioned, I was going to mention that last week on Wednesday, all day, we completed, Siemens completed their industrial grade audit phase of the performance contracting work we're doing for energy conservation. And we, they, their team walked all the properties that are that are being evaluated. They included the snowball, public works, public safety, wastewater treatment plant, Opera House, Townhouse Building and the library. And this phase is to decide what information they will gather and put together to develop the next step, which is the basically decision matrix that they would value in each building that says, these are your options for energy conservation and how it will play out under performance contracting. That would probably get done probably in about two and a half to three months. Would be the next phase to really sit down and decide which ones they're going to actually implement. That's all I really had to add. Um, and with that, I'll move on to approval of board minutes. I need to make a correction to the agenda because the the agenda suggested there are two board minutes in the packet. There's only one that I saw, which would be the minutes for April twenty first, two thousand twenty. Is anybody any comments on that one? Taylor?
I was just going to move that we approve the select board minutes from April twenty first.
Hang on a second. Allison.
Muted Allison.
I, yeah, um, second.
Okay, especially had any questions on what was written or any corrections? Not hearing any. I'll move to a voice, voice vote. Mark?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
And Bob, I also five zero. Thank you very much. Onto item number four, which is the discussion approval of the mutual aid agreement with the city of Belfast for code enforcement officer support, I guess I would call it. Jeremy, do you want to lead the discussion there? Or Audra?
Sorry, whatever you want.
Yeah, Jeremy, do you want to, do you want to lead? I guess I, um, to preface this, um, this will not be the actual agreement. And that's my fault. I should have amended the agenda item to say that this is a concept that an agreement will be based on. So it's, it's what you'll be doing is just giving me the authority to negotiate the agreement with the city of Belfast. And so I'll leave the details to, for Jeremy to explain as to why it's needed and what this, what this will ultimately do.
Sure. And, you know, Bill Kelly was in on this a little bit ago. I think he's still there. And he's been working with this a little bit. So Steve Wilson, our code officer, uh, an amazing code officer. Bob Fornier is a code officer in Belfast. I've had the fortune to be able to work with both of them. They are very smart. They have a in-depth background on construction. And from time to time, there is a need where, you know, either in Belfast or in Camden, that either the inspector, you know, inspector can't make an inspection. You know, it is our, I will say, you know, we've been, I've been in the code enforcement world for twenty plus years in Maine. And, you know, code officers bend over backwards for contractors. Contractors expect inspections once they, when they call. And we do everything possible to make that happen. Sometimes it doesn't work. It can't work. Sometimes those inspections are actually really needed. They really need to happen at that point. So what we've tried to do is come up with a very simple process and agreement where Bob Fornier can do some inspections in Camden as needed and Steve can do them in Belfast as needed. The hope is that he doesn't get used very often and we don't use it very often right now. I mean, they do work with each other occasionally when needed. And we felt like it was needed to legitimize it. I will say, you know, CEOs are also plumbing inspectors. So it's also plumbing. It's also electrical work that gets inspected. It's also heating work that gets inspected. And both of these guys have a in-depth knowledge of all of that. The the intent on this is that the only cost in reality that will be borne by the town would be mileage. The, the odd situation where it was an emergency after hours, occasionally that does happen. Rarely, that inspection needs to happen after hours. And if Steve couldn't do it, we would look to Bob. And if Bob can't do it, do one in Belfast, they would look to Steve. At that point, then we would pay hourly rate for that that person. I would also say that there is a, there will be a provision that says that both of the CEO's department heads would need to authorize and okay the inspection. It it seems pretty straightforward. I know this is not the agreement. Belfast is working on finalizing some language with us on it. But this is the kind of the concept. This is the intent. Again, it won't be used very often. And it's just one of those things you need to have in your back pocket. Again, I've been doing this for twenty plus years in Maine. And in other places I've worked and had multiple code officials that were very knowledgeable about all facets of construction, electricity, plumbing, heating and building construction. So, um, that's what this does. And that's the hope. And it's my hope that we can just try to do this, enter into an agreement. And I would say that since it's a CEO type position, once an agreement is reached, likely the select board would have to say authorize or approve that CEO annually, um, to do work in town. Outside of that, um, I don't see much of an issue. I don't see much cost to the town. I do see a benefit to the town. I see a benefit to the contractors and the homeowners who demand and expect inspections within twenty four hours. We get calls, I will tell you that they want inspection in an hour and we do our best to make that happen. So I don't know if that applies it, Bill, maybe you want to throw in where Belfast is with this?
Say again, Jeremy?
I was just, since Bill's on this conversation, I wondered if he maybe wanted to at least mention where Belfast was.
They, um, like Camden, they've been very busy with all kinds of things. This is an agenda item for May nineteenth for the city council. So all I could say is that from the code officer's perspective in Belfast, Bob, it was well received as a possible benefit to have coverage. But it's got to work its way up the ladder up to the select board. So that's all I can say.
Taylor, how's your hand up? Taylor?
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense to me. It does seem pretty straightforward, as Jeremy said, you know, sort of an emergency backup to make sure that there's another tool in our toolbox. In case something comes up and we need another person to go to for inspections. Um, I do like the idea that, you know, I don't know about contractors demanding immediate service. You know, I think being prompt with them is important, particularly given how much construction is going on all the time around here. And I think that just having another supervisor and that's trained and has worked with Jeremy before makes a lot of sense. And if it's not going to be used that often, that's fine. My only concern is that I keep an eye on making sure that the mutual aid agreement is mutual, like all of them should be. And if we're re-upping it every year, I think that's a good way to to be able to review how things, how things are going. So it makes sense to me.
Bob, really quick, just a comment to Taylor's points. You would, since it's a CEO type of scenario, you would have to re-up it annually anyway. I appreciate that, Taylor, and that's provided for already. And I think just so you know, and I think everyone knows that the fire, there are a handful of fire guys for Camden Fire that are doing inspections, helping Steve do CEO work. That, through that is continuing. I will say there is, you cannot compare one CEO and one building inspector to another unless they have the same breadth of knowledge and experience and background. Nothing at all against the fire guys. But again, Steve and Bob have been in this code world for twenty years and they're building, you know, they're building people. Nothing against fire guys, but there are certain things the fire guys cannot inspect. I'm a certified code officer as well. I would not be inspecting certain structural work because I just don't have that background. And I just wanted to clarify that because if that is an issue or someone, you know, because again, we do have our fire guys doing code work. I just wanted to clarify that they'll continue and they're getting, you know, they're doing more and more inspections all the time. But it's not the same level of work that they're doing, that Steve and Bob are doing day in and day.
Right. I was going to ask that clarification because the the level of competency of a CEO is quite different from what the fire guys can do legitimately. Um, not the least of which is variances of plumbing, structural inspections. That's a, it's a very different level of inspection.
Yeah.
Mark?
It just, it changes something just really quick and mentioning the fire, our fire staff. Audra, I'm curious, did they have to suspend our EMT training classes for fire and and EMT in a time when those people are very busy?
No, no, Jody can tell you firsthand, she's participating in the class.
We are still full speed ahead and we still meet, but we meet via Zoom and we do, um, actually in the near future, we're going to be doing groups of two to six of us and work on our, our practicals and hands-on training. So we're doing really well.
Oh, good. Good. Thank you. I'm glad, glad to hear that.
Allison was next.
Oh, no, let Taylor go.
All right, Taylor.
I was just going to ask what Audra needs from us to move forward.
Oh, well, hold on. I thought maybe it's better probably, but I just say it now because it'll be theme out of sync after that. So I don't love this. Mostly because, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll support it because it's, you know, to be supportive of town staff. I guess it's more the way it's being talked about and the just the, the frenzy to respond to, to contractors within twenty four hours. And sometimes they want this and sometimes they want that. And I, I'm not aware that most people can guarantee an email response from the town office within twenty four hours or, you know, much less an hour, um, sometimes, but it just.
By all, we have to do inspections within a certain amount of time. So.
I think you have like two weeks or something though, right?
No.
No?
No. Inspections are different. It depends what, 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 um, if we're talking plumbing, if we're talking building, it's all very different. So.
Okay.
Generally.
I mean, I noticed that demolition permits are are processed with lightning speed. We, it's, it's been frustrating to see that we can't even recycle in this community right now. But you can tear down a house in an afternoon and nobody knows about it and it goes up in a cloud of dust. And I get complaints about it frequent because there were just two that came down that I heard lots about. I, I, the town of Camden has a reputation for being excellent at pointing out what is wrong with during inspections. Same with Belfast. And I guess that's, that's an okay thing. It's not necessarily considered easier to do work in Camden than it is in other places. We may respond very quickly, but you're also very likely to be told that you, you know, you can't. We may respond very quickly, but you're also very likely to be told that you, you know, you can't do something the way that you wanted to do.
I mean, there are codes that, you know, are required. So if a contractor isn't wanting to follow the code, we have to point it out to them that they're doing it wrong and we provide them guidance on how to do it right.
Yeah, for sure. And Camden's really great at, at that. And maybe the danger is that, like we, I guess Belfast isn't that close. And so Steve going to Belfast for an afternoon to do an inspection there, that, that takes a fair amount of time. And I think that there's value in Steve being available for Camden residents too, for people here that I'm just envisioning that a lot of the time when I might want to just stop by and somebody might want to ask Steve about something like a public right of way or whatever that he's going to be in Belfast doing inspections and I'd, I'd almost rather hi, like put more money into hiring the people that we need that can be part of our team than. But I think, Taylor put it well, that it's all, it's, you know, if it's a small thing that's not envisioned to be used all that often, then it probably makes perfect sense. If, you know, it's important that it's a person that you're, you know, comfortable with also. So I'm, I'm kind of, in fact, just that the way it's being discussed makes me a little, there are things I worry about with it, but in the end, I trust.
Maybe once or twice a month, honestly. I mean, that's how limited I think this will be used. And so, you know, it's very different than another employee, another person, very, very different. So.
Do we ever do anything like that with Rockport?
Well, we did. So this is the thing. I mean, this is what happens in small towns. And when it comes to code enforcement, code officers end up trying to cover for other code officers. The reality is, is you need a legal agreement to be able to make that happen. So if we, if Rockport was working with Camden in the past, and frankly, I would prefer, I, I have worked with both of these, these code officers. And from my perspective, this could be just between these two, these two inspectors. You know, we, we have to have an agreement in order for it to legally work. And no matter if we were working with Rockport in the past or Rockland in the past, we, Steve worked with Belfast in the past. He worked with Rockland in the past. They would do this and no one knew it was happening. They were just covering each other's work. But we need to legitimize it in some fashion. And honestly, we have two very, very, very smart, intelligent inspectors that they're thinking about the property and who's going to own that building long-term forever. You know, it's not about the contractor. It's not about the, that the current owner. It's about the building. And that matters. And I think that's what matters to these code officers.
I don't think it's any debate about the fact that we need an agreement. And that's obvious because.
I mean, I think that was helpful to me, what Jeremy just said, because I think he's saying that it's been going, it goes on all the time, that it's common to share. So that's, that's helpful to me to hear that this does just happen.
With that, what do you need, Audra?
So I just need authorization to negotiate an agreement with the city of Belfast from the select board.
So moved.
Who said that?
Second.
Okay, you're going too fast.
It was me. I was the first. I was the second.
Thank you so much. Discussion. Roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Bob, aye, five zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks, Bob.
Sure, sure. Moving on to item number, I'll just count here, item five, which is to set the date for elections, an annual town meeting slash secret ballot vote, July 14th, 2020.
So Bob, for this one, would it be easier with everyone if I shared my screen, which has a draft version of the warrant that, or sorry, it has a version of the warrant that we can amend as the board sees fit?
Regarding the election date? Yes.
Uh, just the whole entire warrant?
Or are we gonna just set the date first? There are two separate agenda items. Are we gonna set the date first and then move on to the warrant?
I thought we were saying that, where's Audra?
Yes.
I would move that we set the date for the elections, the secret ballot vote for July 14th, 2020.
Okay, discussion. Okay, roll call vote, Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Bob, aye, five zero. Thank you. Now to the next question, which I think, I think you were addressing, Audra, was the approval of the warrant for the secret ballot for July 14th, 2020, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, you could share a screen. Well, if you share a screen, I mean, I guess we need to look at the whole thing and, and make comments and then make a motion. Okay, okay, that's fine. Go ahead. That's fine. That's good. I thought you were going to wipe out all the, I couldn't see your faces. I want to. All right. I suggest we go through these and Audra, as we go through these, and if there's any comment, can you make the adjustments on screen?
Yes.
I think it's the easiest way. That way, when we get to the end, we can make a one fell swoop motion to approve the annual town warrant for July 14th, 2020. That sounded already, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Let's move into it. So.
I have a general comment.
Okay, go ahead.
About the format and that it, it makes it a little bit hard because it's not in the ballot format. And so I'm extra conscious this time, knowing that we're doing, doing it differently and not having that open, chatty town meeting format. So some of these things, and I guess we can handle them on a case-by-case basis, but I don't, just because I see what the question is, it's really, it would be really helpful if we could see in the future how this translates. And well, not in the future, but for even this one, how this is going to translate to what it looks like for the public when we're actually voting, where the yes, no is going to go, where the, you know, the, the names, a lot of it we can envision because it's just the same as it, as it always is, but like the budget and the, and then also just universally on all the questions that have that normal disclosure that says the, the full language can be viewed in the town clerk's office during normal business hours. I don't know if that's accurate or not. I haven't really tried to go to the town office, but, or maybe it will be accurate. But in, in addition to that, if we could add that the full language or however it's appropriately worded, that it's available on the website, you know, with a, with a link to that and just do the thing that Janice normally does, which is to put it up. It's usually pretty easy to find right on the homepage, but just to direct people. Because if we're really going to be pushing a lot of people to do this from home, we, I would want the notes to reflect, you know, something feasible.
Audra, you want to comment on the process? As I understand, we're approving the language here and this is definitely not the ballot format. That's what Katrina and company have to do with the, the elections people that she uses in the Midwest, wherever they are. Would you want to comment in that, Audra?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the difficulty of this. I, I, I hear where Allison's coming from. It'd be ideal if, you know, you could see what it was going to look like, but, you know, really all you can do now is approve the language. And then, you know, we, Katrina works with a printer to get the ballot set and then have it printed. And we don't really have, you know, a version of it that we could bring back to you for any sort of additional approval.
But we could certainly talk about, like, it was the, the budget part that was the most concerning to me that like, just where the, and I think you said you've added in the number now, but I mean, when we get to those places, maybe we can get to those places and we can say, okay, is this going to be, where's the yes or no going to?
Right.
Go. Then there were some additional explanatory notes that were in a memo after, in our packet, after the, after the, the warrant. And I don't know, are those going to go out to the public or are those just for us? Or some of them were redundant.
Just for you.
Oh, those are just for us. Okay.
Yeah.
But to that, to that discussion, Audra, as we look at these articles, or each of these articles intended to be on the ballot?
All except for Article One. So Article One is just the official opening of town. Yeah. And I think all of you have been to that. Where they do the opening and then that the ballot voting commences for everybody who's coming into the polls.
Right. So first article that would be, or whatever order would be on the ballot would be the Article Two.
Correct.
Which would be the two select board members and blah, 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 the two directors of the schools and the one member of the personnel board. Names listed. Check out the ones you like and you don't like. Then that's kind of black and white, at least to me. And then there would be Article Three, which would be the first actual wording for the, one of the ordinances has been approved. And this is just the warrant language we need to approve for the town of Camden, a site plan review ordinance that we approved. Is that correct?
Correct. And so if you look on the green chair, I've included, so clerk's office during regular business hours and on the town of Camden's website.
Audra?
Yes.
So in the explanatory paragraph, the second to the last sentence, there must be a word missing. Additionally, the current ordinance does not specifically require that sites with approved site plan approvals to remain, I think there's supposed to be another word in there, to remain in compliance with the latest dated approved site plans. It doesn't, doesn't read quite right.
I think you just need to get rid of the two. I think there's an extra word.
Yes.
I think you're right.
That works too.
That works great.
Sorry about that.
Well, no biggie.
Put it on your permanent record.
Are there any, are there any comments on the verbiage for that, that ordinance approval?
Can we go back to the ones before where you're picking school board and all that stuff and select board? And is it going to say that you can vote for, well, forever, however many people you can vote? Is there going to be a?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll say vote for two select board and then it'll give you the three choices.
Right.
And same for the school board and all that stuff.
Yes.
And now can you, somebody remind me the, with the write-ins, in order to write somebody in for like the personnel board, you don't have to be regist, you have to be registered as a write-in candidate? I never registered as writing.
No, you do not.
Okay.
We voted that down.
Oh, right.
Few years ago.
The Mickey Mouse and all the.
Want to write, so I can write your name in there, Allison?
Yes. And then, yeah, remember when I first got on select board and I was bound and determined to stay on the personnel board too?
Yes, I remember. I can remember.
But so then why did we have to go through this thing where with the, when we were worried about people not being able to get signatures? And there was one or two people in particular that hadn't gotten their signature for school board. And then we said, oh, well, it's okay because that person got registered as a writing candidate. So it's all okay.
It was just incorrect information.
Oh.
It was all cleared up. Katrina cleared that all up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I didn't get that either, Allison. So.
So.
Didn't know.
Okay. So that was just wrong, that she never did need to register as a write-in.
Right.
I understood. There was a state regulation that said that the person had to declare. It was a word I heard, declare. Write-in. And I had suggested to one person that they, at least just to be careful to write, to write a letter to Katrina and say, I'm declaring as a, as a write-in. Just like, if that's not necessary, it's fine with me.
Oh, good. Okay. Now that, now that clears up everything. Thank you. My head was spinning from that.
I can understand that. Let's look at Article Four. This is the accessory apartment ordinance change. And, and Audra's fixing it already.
Does that, does the definition for accessory apartment change across the entire ordinance? So somebody with an, I'm a little scared to ask this, but I, so somebody with an existing accessory apartment that they don't have, that they don't, that is not your round or is not a primary residence?
An accessory apartment would be one that was permitted as an accessory apart.
Ah, that's well put. Okay.
I think that addresses your.
Okay. So it would, then we're turning it into a prior to 2020 and after 2020 kind of situation or? Or we're just going with like?
Yeah. If you had an accessory apartment that was permitted, and now just going down the road Mark talked about earlier, right? One of, one of the pushes for this. If someone at property, an elderly, elderly couple built an accessory apartment, they've been living in their single family home. They've been renting their accessory apartment, but now they want to live in that accessory apartment, we would let them live in that accessory apartment. Right? Because these, this is the law now. Does that make?
Well, do, do accessory apartments currently allow vacation rentals in them?
Accessory apartments do not because it says that they need to be the primary residence of the occupant.
Oh, it currently says that?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to answer that question. Are we re-examining what this change is or just trying to clarify the wording, Allison? I'm not sure where you're going with this.
I am not trying to, I'm trying to make sure, it was in reading the explanation that it, I was like wanting to make sure that I understood it and that I'm not being, I love this and you couldn't say anything to get me to vote against it, but I.
Yeah, I think it's a good question, Allison. I think your, you know, your point is, is very valid. And these are things that code officers and planning, you know, staff do all the time and deal with ordinances that, that definitions change and use and, you know, where they're allowed to change. But we always, and you know, there's a way to interpret these things and to carry them forward and, and to go back to that accessory apartment and say, yes, you can now live in that one. And now if you want to build a new one, you can build, live, build one and live in it. So.
Right. And I think that it's, there's not a, I was mainly concerned, or not concerned, because it doesn't bother me that much, but the idea that somebody has an accessory apartment that they're renting out for short-term rentals and does this, take that away from them. But I think there's already language.
There's already lang, there's already language. Now, keep in mind, if someone has a two-unit building, it doesn't mean they have an accessory apartment, right?
Right.
So that accessory, that two-unit building, that one unit could still be rented out as much as some people don't like it in Camden, short-term rentals. You can still rent them out to somebody for, you know, no less than seven days. But if it's an accessory apartment under the current ordinance, it's got to be somebody's primary residence. Same for the current, the new ordinance amendment. We define what primary residence is this time and we say six months plus one day.
I kind of thought it was like one, it says one month or something right now or anyway, anyway.
Nope.
I don't want to.
Allison, do you have any comment on the languages written on the warrant? Do you have any?
Um, well, I guess I was, it was the, it was the language that said the definition of accessory apartment. I were, I'm trying to keep trying to.